Good evening, Burbank community, fellow council members, city manager, city clerk, and most important, city staff. Thank you for being here tonight. And welcome to the Burbank City Council Meeting of Tuesday, October the 5th, 2021. During the current state of emergency due to COVID-19 and in the interests of public health and safety, the public will not be able to physically attend today's meeting in lieu of in-person attendance. The city is providing alternatives for viewing and participating in city council meetings. Will everybody please join me by rising and take the Pledge of Allegiance with me? Please place your right hand over your heart and repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Good evening, Ms. Jimenez. How are you?
Good evening, Mayor. I'm good. Thank you.
Awesome. Can you please conduct the roll?
Councilmember Anthony?
Present.
Councilmember Schultz?
Present.
Councilmember Springer?
Here.
Vice Mayor Talamontes?
Present.
And Mayor Frutos.
Feeling groovy. Happy to be here. Okay, there will be one period of general public comment tonight. If you would like to participate, please call now at 818-238-3335. Callers will be placed in a queue until we begin public comment. We have four announcements this evening. First one, Metro will be hosting two virtual community meetings regarding the proposed North Hollywood to Pasadena Bus Rapid Transit Project on Thursday, October the 7th, from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. and 5:00 p.m. to 7:00. Metro will present and seek feedback on updated design options for sections of the project running through Burbank, and that's the one down off Olive. It goes by St. Finbar, all the way up to the MetroLink and further up onto Glen Oaks. For more, I'm sorry, oh, for more information and the Zoom link to attend, please visit the city calendar at burbankca.gov. Item number two, the Burbank City Clerk's Office is currently accepting applications for one vacancy in the Art and Public Places Committee for an unexpired term ending July 31st, 2022. The deadline to submit an application is Thursday, November 4th, 2021, at 5:00 p.m. In addition, the City Clerk's Office is accepting applications for one vacancy on the Senior Citizen Board for an unexpired term ending July 31st, 2022. The deadline to submit an application for this vacancy is Wednesday, October 20th, 2021, at 5:00 p.m. If interested, apply online at burbankca.gov/bccapplication. For more information, please contact the City Clerk's Office at 818-238-5851 or email cityclerks@burbankca.gov. Item number three, the Community Development Department is hosting an online meeting to seek input on preparation of the Downtown Burbank Transit Oriented Development Specific Plan Environmental Impact Report on Wednesday, October 6th, 2021, at 6:00 p.m. The specific plan seeks to update development standards for new residential, commercial, and industrial development opportunities while protecting existing neighborhoods. For more information on the plan and how to participate, visit the project's website at downtownburbanktod.com or contact Senior Planner Leonard Boucher at 818-238-5250. Item number four, Burbank Reads aim to bring the community together through the Shared Act of Reading. Titles selected for the 2021 were chosen with the theme of sustainability in mind. Our main section is "Branding Sweet Grass" by author Robin Wall Kimmer. In addition, books aimed at teens and children have also been chosen. Throughout the month of October, community members are invited to check out the books from any Burbank Public Library location or online, join in a book discussion, and participate in a variety of activities and special events. For complete program details, pick up a brochure at any Burbank library or visit our website, burbanklibrary.org. We have two proclamations on the agenda this evening. The first one, our first proclamation is for the Indigenous Peoples' Day, which is right here. Whereas the city of Burbank values the contributions of Indigenous peoples' cultures and whereas natives and non-natives have shared this community for hundreds of years and Indigenous peoples have provided friendships, guidance, and protection and whereas the city of Burbank has the opportunity and means to cultivate a community that honors and respects the diverse history of our community and whereas the city of Burbank shall continue to promote racial equity and justice for all people and oppose discrimination towards Indigenous peoples as it percolates, and I apologize, tongue-tied, poverty, income inequality and inequalities in health and education and whereas the city of Burbank promotes the discovery of history, culture, and traditions of Indigenous peoples at its annual Native American Day Celebration event in June at Stowe Park and whereas to promote knowledge about Indigenous peoples, unify communities, combat prejudice, and eliminate discrimination against Indigenous people. The city of Burbank recognizes October the 11th, 2021, as Indigenous Peoples' Day. Now, therefore, I, Bob Frutos, Mayor of the city of Burbank, do hereby proclaim the second Monday in October as Indigenous Peoples' Day in the city of Burbank and encourage all those in our community and beyond to honor and celebrate the culture, art, and contributions of Indigenous peoples throughout the ages and to recommit to an atmosphere of goodwill and friendship amongst our communities. Here to accept this proclamation is our community friend and leader, Gloria Saliz. Ms. Saliz, would you like to say a few words to the community and welcome to our council meeting?
Thank you, Mayor Frutos. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor Talamontes, and city council members and staff. Indigenous Peoples' Day is a holiday that celebrates and honors Native American peoples and commemorates their cultures and histories. According to the latest report from Amnesty International, there are over 300 million Indigenous people around the world, spread across more than 90 countries. They belong to more than 5,000 different Indigenous peoples and speak more than 4,000 languages. Although they have different customs and cultures, they have faced the same harsh realities as they have in our country: eviction from their ancestral lands, being denied the opportunity to express their culture, physical attacks and treatment as second-class citizens. Which leads us to the U.S. Department of Justice report that found that Native American Indian women face murder rates that are more than 10 times the national average. According to the Centers for Disease Control, homicide is the third leading cause of death among Native American women 10 to 24 years of age. From the Navajo long walk to the slave trades to the current struggles of cases being lost within our judicial system, this is a legacy of violence. However, there is a shiny bright star in this legacy. For the Indigenous people of Catholic faith, their first Native American saint, Saint Kateri Tekakwita, was canonized a saint in October 2012. And formerly known as the Lily of the Mohawks, she was born in 1656 in the Mohawk Village of Los Anan on the south side of the Mohawk River in present-day New York State to a Christian Algonquian mother and a non-Christian Mohawk chief. Her parents and brother died in a smallpox epidemic, which left Kateri's eyesight impaired. Her face scarred and left her weak for the rest of her life. At the time, she was only four years old. Because of her poor vision, she was named Tekakwita, which means "she who bumps into things." At a young age, she defied her tribe's culture by refusing to marry. The Mohawks scorned her when, at age 20, she converted to Catholicism and was given the name Kateri. Two years later, she escaped to Canada to live in a settlement of Christian Indians near Montreal where Kateri cared for the young and elderly in her village until her death. And Saint Kateri is held in great esteem among the Native American people, especially the Kateri Circle here in Los Angeles. And with that, I would like to turn it over to Carrie Lutke, who is a member of the Kateri Circle, for her to receive the proclamation. Thank you.
Good evening. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Carrie Lutke. I come from the nation of the Dene, which is Navajo, and the pueblo. I am a very proud Native American, and as Gloria said, I am in charge of the Kateri Circle here in Burbank, and we're honored to have that. I want to thank Mayor Frutos and accept this proclamation with honor and pride for my Indigenous people.
Thank you so much for being with us this evening. Thank you so much, Ms. Saliz, for the valuable information, so we know a little bit more about this great culture. Welcome to both of you and thank you for being here this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, moving on to our next item. Our next proclamation is for Fire Week Prevention. Excuse me. Whereas the city of Burbank is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in and visiting Burbank and whereas fire is a serious public safety concern both locally and nationally and homes are in the locations where people are the greatest risk from fire and whereas home fires killed more than 2,770 people in the United States in 2019 according to the National Fire Prevention Association and fire departments in the United States responded to 339 500 home fires and whereas smoke alarms, smoke alarms send smoke well before you can, alerting you to danger in the event of fire in which you may have as little as two minutes to escape safely and whereas working smoke alarms cut the risk of dying in reported home fires in half of Burbank residents. Should be sure everyone in the room understands the sounds of the alarms and knows how to respond and whereas Burbank residents who have planned to and participated in home fire escape plan are more prepared and will therefore be more likely to survive fire and whereas the Burbank Fire Department is dedicated to reducing home fires and home fire injuries through prevention and protection education and whereas Burbank residents that are responsive to public education measures are better able to take personal steps to increase their safety from fire, especially in their homes and whereas the 2021 Fire Prevention Week theme, "Learn the Sounds of Fire Safely," effectively serves us, to remind us, it is important to learn the different sounds of smoke and carbon monoxide alarms. Now, therefore, I, Bob Frutos, Mayor of the city of Burbank, to hereby proclaim October 3rd through the 9th, 2021, as Fire Prevention Week throughout Burbank. I urge all the people of Burbank to "Learn the Sounds of Fire Safety and Fire Prevention Week 2021." Here to accept this proclamation is Fire Inspector/Inspection Manager Danny King. Mr. King, would you like to say a few words, sir, and welcome to our council meeting?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, thank you very much for having me here today. This year's Fire Prevention Week campaign is "Learn the Sounds of Fire Safety." We urge all Burbank residents to participate, whole-home safety, so you and your family are prepared not only during Fire Prevention Week but throughout the entire year. Having functional alarms installed throughout your home is the first line of defense for fire prevention. You can find out more information on the city of Burbank website by clicking "Fire Department" under the Departments, and we have a whole list of safety and emergency preparedness information ready for all the citizens. Thank you very much, and we accept this proclamation.
Thank you so much, sir. Thank you. As a reminder, if you would like to participate in general public comment, please call now at 818-238-335. Oh, wait a minute. Mr. City Manager Houston, we have a problem. Sir, through you, can I ask to have Christine, please meet me at the dais? I have a concern on my script here. Do I need correction?
Absolutely. Christine, could you come to the podium, please?
Christine, this is NASA. We have a problem. Front and center on the deck. Mr. City Manager? Christine?
Mr. City Manager, please join me.
Yeah, yeah.
It's tough to see you move on, but it's important for you to move on because you have the talent, you have the skill set, that it'd be selfish, because trust me, I had this long talk with the city manager to keep you here. For the members of the community that are watching, Christine has been that administrator behind the city council, the liaison for the proclamations, the council agenda. She prepares me for each council meeting, and she helps out the entire council that, I'm sad selfishly, because I wish she would stay here for the remainder of my mayorship, but the city manager has growth for you. You're moving on to the police department to continue your growth and knowledge in the city. You are just a very talented employee that I've had the privilege to work alongside with you, that the council also feels the same way strongly. They wished they could be here, but obviously with COVID-19. But we have this certificate by the Office of the City Council for your outstanding dedication service to the city of Burbank and our, as our administrative analyst. Your professionalism and attention to detail made our jobs easier. We, the entire council, appreciate you for all that you have done and wish you the best in your new position. And the city manager and I would like to give you this small token of, thank you, thank you. You're gonna be missed, but we know you're moving on to greater things because the city manager looks at your skill set and where you need to move on to be more of an asset as you continue to grow in our city. Thank you for everything, man.
And again, for the members of the community, a lot of stuff she does behind the scenes to help out the entire council, and she's been promoted to a higher position within the police department. And trust me, when I sat with the city manager and we discussed it, it's important for her to move on and get that skill growth for continuing her career, working with the city. She's a very talented employee within our city, and she'll be back, but maybe as a city manager in some time, we don't know, but she's definitely a great, a great team member for the city. Bring her back, bring her back. Okay. Mr. City Manager, do you have anything to report out to the community?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do not have anything for tonight.
Okay. Madam City Attorney, do you have anything to report out to the community with regards to closed session?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, members of the viewing public and staff. Council met this afternoon in closed session on two items: public employee appointment pursuant to Government Code Section 54957, title position, city attorney/interim city attorney. The second item, conference with labor negotiators pursuant to Government Code Section 54957.6, name of agency negotiator, mayor and vice mayor, and the title under consideration, city attorney/interim city attorney. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam City Attorney. Now is the time for general public comment. Members of the public may address the council for up to three minutes on any matter concerning city business. Remember to please lower the volume on your TV or computer and take your phone off speaker when you deliver your public comment to the council. To participate, again, please call right now, 818-238-3335. Ms. Jimenez, do we have any callers on the line for public comment?
Yes, we do, Mayor. We have a few calls, and we will transfer the first one now.
Beam them down, Scotty. Beam them down.
Coming through.
Thank you, ma'am.
The first caller is Arby Castenian.
Good evening. Welcome.
Good evening. Thank you for taking my call. My name is Arby Castenian. I'm a resident of Burbank for 20-plus years. I love Burbank. My kids grew up here. They went to school. Now they're married. They moved on. And this Saturday, my house was burglarized very badly by six people, and we have everything on camera, from my side and from my neighbor's camera. We have really good views of, at least the face of the driver, because he wasn't wearing a mask. It looks like it's a black man. The other ones were not wearing masks, were wearing masks, so we couldn't tell, you know, who they are. And at the same time, before they pulled into my driveway, there was a black girl on the street going back and forth, I guess, you know, trying to see, you know, what's going on, and because we left the house at 6:45 to let them know, you know, if it's okay to come in. They took everything. I mean, they, I mean, all my belongings, my purses, my shoes, my jewelry, my, my, my personal things, everything is gone. And my house been, my cars on my driveway been burglarized at least four to five times, and then my husband's truck one or two times, and then my son's car before he got married another time. We have all the police reports, we have cameras, we have all the evidence, but nothing really has been done because I've never seen one time that police car would come and control the area to see. Our street is a cold ass set, and one sign that really attracts, I guess, burglars is because if there is a sign, it says "dead end." Hope, because that ad means, you know, it's dead end, you can come and do whatever you want. At least, you know, if you guys can change that, the writing, it may be saying "not a thorough street" or something. And we had a, well, we had an emergency meeting with our neighbors, and it looks like everybody is very upset and everybody wants to move from Burbank because the crime rate is really high, and we want to sell our houses and move, go someplace else. I mean, our street is, we have no lighting. We asked for a gate before on Sherlock, you know, Sherlock and Elwood, at least to protect us. That hasn't been done. So it's just, and I find out from today from a couple of my neighbors that every, there is at least six people that I talked to, at least four of them had burglaries the past six months or so. So, like I said, I am representing the neighbors on Elwood Street.
Thank you very much for your time. Your three minutes are over. Thank you for your call. Next caller, please.
Our next caller is Linda Besson.
Good evening and welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Frutos and council members. October is Domestic Violence Awareness Month. As the president of Haven Hills, a domestic violence shelter, I could quote many statistics to show how domestic violence is prevalent, devastating, and deadly. Instead, I'd like to talk about two cases of domestic violence that you've probably heard about. The first is a young woman who was traveling cross-country with her intimate partner. Witnesses saw him beat her and called the police. Footage from the Utah officer's body cams show clear evidence of domestic violence against the woman, but for whatever reason, the officers did not recognize that evidence and did not act to protect her. She was then murdered by her partner days later. The other instance is one from Burbank. A TikTok video seen by thousands shows a woman who is terrified that she will be subjected to physical violence by her abuser because she has already suffered physical violence. Many in the community have asked how they can help her. My message to my community is first, understand that domestic violence encompasses all ages, from teenagers to seniors. It exists for the wealthy and for those struggling economically. It affects all genders and all sexual orientations. It includes the educated and uneducated, every race, culture, and religion. It affects children and pets and all members of the household. The most important thing we can do as a community is empower domestic violence survivors. This empowerment means making sure they are safe and their families are safe. Each solution can be different for each situation. It could mean transportation to a shelter away from the abuser, or connecting them with trusted family members, or it may mean security and safety for them and their families in their own home. During public comment at this month's Police Commission meeting, I will ask that the commission review a program that has been placed, been in place in the city of Los Angeles and successfully implemented by LAPD. It focuses on the needs and safety of domestic violence survivors, and the program is staffed by trained professionals who understand how to empower survivors. I will provide greater details on the program and hope that the commission and city council acknowledge, discuss, and look for ways to implement this program in our city. Lives could depend on it. If anyone listening wants to speak to someone about their situation, you have options and you are not alone. You can call the County of LA hotline at 211, or Haven Hills has a 24-hour crisis line, which is 818-887-6589, or go to havenhills.org. Thank you.
Thank you for your call. Next caller, please.
Mayor, at this time, there are no callers in the queue.
Okay, with that information, I now declare the public comment period closed. This is the opportunity for council members to respond back to the community callers of this evening, city manager or city attorney. Who would like to start first? Councilmember Anthony?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We do have a robust police force here in the city, and we are definitely taking these matters seriously, the domestic violence issues and the crime rate. I will mention that Burbank is one of the safest cities in the country. Our violent crime statistics are less than half of the state and the nationwide statistics. It's a very, very safe city to live in. We have almost a two-minute response time with our police. I also want to mention that on a public call like this, it's highly inappropriate to discuss the, the race or the gender of suspected suspects. That is specifically used when people are low. That is specifically used when people are looking for suspects. If there's a bulletin out, that descriptor is used then, it's completely inappropriate to mention it here, especially in this call. We all know that Burbank is safe. I feel terrible that this has happened to that caller. We will do everything we can to make sure this doesn't happen again. We need to be able to protect our communities and have people feel safe and secure in their own homes with their own property. Thank you for calling in. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Anthony. Any other councilmember wish to weigh in? Councilmember Schultz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you to both of the callers for calling in. And I just want to particularly thank Ms. Besson for calling in to talk about Domestic Violence Awareness Month. We can talk about statistics, but domestic violence, in my experience as a criminal prosecutor, is one of the most often under-reported crimes. And it's very important that we are talking about resources that are out there. So Ms. Besson, I do encourage you to talk to the Police Commission. I would also note that councilmembers Springer and Anthony are also on our Domestic Violence Task Force, so that's another resource I would direct you to. And of course, I'm happy to talk with you about that as well. Thank you again, everyone, for calling in. Have a good night.
Thank you, Councilmember Schultz. Councilmember Springer.
I'd like to thank the callers. And could staff please reach out to Ms. Castenian? And also, Ms. Besson, I think you've attended the Domestic Violence Task Force, but I'll make sure that you get the link for our next meeting. Thank you very much for calling in.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Springer. Vice Mayor.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to thank the two speakers that called in tonight. Thank you for engaging with the community as well as the city council. Ms. Besson, in regards to one of your concerns here in Burbank, yes, the police department is looking at it, getting all their information before they make a public statement. So just, you know, be patient. I know sometimes it's hard to be patient when you see a video like that because people have already made up their mind. But the police department is looking into it, and they will be making a public statement when it's time and when it's appropriate time because this is going to be adjudicated somehow. So thanks again for bringing it to our attention. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I want to thank the callers for calling. And I know I'm going to be very interested in listening to your public comment for the Police Commission, Ms. Besson, as I sit as a liaison with Councilmember Schultz. Moving on, folks. Next item is the consent calendar. Ms. Jimenez, can you please read the consent items this evening?
Yes, Mayor. Item number one is to approve the city council minutes of the regular meeting of September 28th, 2021. Item number two is adoption of a resolution approving contract documents and awarding a construction contract for bid schedule 1490, Dabell Irrigation Replacement to American Landscape. And the final item is item number three, adoption of a resolution extending the local emergency caused by COVID-19.
Thank you. Do I have a motion? I see Councilmember Schultz's motion. Oh, sorry.
Actually, Mr. Mayor, I actually had a question for staff on item two. I didn't want to pull it, but just a question.
Okay, just a question. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I am, we're all on receipt of a letter dated yesterday, October 4th. And the substance of the letter is that it's alleged that our bidding process violated the California Public Contract Code and Fair Contracts Act. I know the staff has put together a really thorough response, but just for the public's benefit, I was wondering if you could address that allegation.
Madam City Attorney, can you please answer?
Thank you. I don't want to go into a lot of detail. This was not, you know, sometimes bid protests, I'm going to put that in quotes, is part of the agenda. But a letter was received and it was responded to. So if anyone looking for copies of those letters, we can definitely provide those. And it wasn't attached here because it's, are put as part of the council item because it truly is separate. Someone raised an issue, which sometimes happens, about the award. The city attorney's office worked on a response in connection, in conjunction, I should say, with Marissa Garcia, our Parks and Recreation Director, as well as with our purchasing staff, and found that it was non-meritorious. And so that is why this item is in front of you this evening, and we're asking you to go ahead and approve award of the contract.
Thank you, Madam City Attorney. Any other questions? Seeing none. Do we have a second? Or actually, I'll start all over again. I need a motion. Councilmember Schultz.
I'll make the motion, Mr. Mayor.
Do we have a second? Councilmember Anthony? If there's no more comments, questions, Madam City Clerk, please call for the vote.
Councilmember Schultz.
Yes.
Councilmember Anthony.
Yes.
Councilmember Springer.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Talamontez.
Yes.
Mayor Frutos.
Yes. Thank you very much. Our next item this evening is, this evening, we have two reports to the council. The first report is for an update on the state legislative session. Joining us tonight are David Jones and Kira Ross from Emanuel Jones and Associates. Welcome. And the mic is yours. Good to see you guys again.
Great, great to see you all. David Jones here was, first, I must take personal privilege and have a shout out to Christine. She was our liaison and was so very helpful to us over the last several months and months that she made sure that everything ran smoothly for us. We did see a number of you at the league conference, and it was great to see and meet with you. I'm going to give you kind of a brief, kind of look backward on the last, recently almost over legislative session, go through some of the highlights of things that happened, and then I'll turn it over to Kira to talk about housing bills because I know that's way up on the agenda here. So right now, we're at the end of the signing and vetoing procedure for the governor. He has till Sunday to sign or veto legislation that landed on his desk. He had about 1,100 bills that were passed in this legislative session, which is down quite a bit from a normal year. I don't know exactly, Kira may correct me, but I'm guessing he's got about 350 bills left for him to sign between now and Sunday. One of the things that was kind of evident here is that everything was colored by the recall. So the recall campaign put a significant damper on the desire of the governor and legislators to put things onto the governor's desk. So many of the things that people were pushing for were weighed on whether they would have a positive or negative effect on his recall decision. So controversial bills and other bills got shelved. So we're going to see some of the bills that were near and dear to some of our members' hearts that they had to put away for the year come back next year. One of the bills that's very important for our city clerk and others is AB 361, which was signed into law. There was an executive order that allowed city councils to meet remotely, and that expired on September 30th. So AB 361 by Assemblymember Reavis is going to continue our ability to meet remotely outside of the Brown Act. And so it is a very important bill so that if COVID continues or if the city experiences a natural disaster of any kind, that you continue to have the ability to meet remotely until January 1 of 2024. So that's important. Police reform, there was a huge slew of bills that dealt with police reform. A big package signed earlier this week. They dealt with certain personnel disclosures, so more disclosures of officers' behavior, decertification of officers that have been shown to have not behaved well, an elimination of the ability to use projectiles and tear gas on peaceful protesters, and a requirement that peace officers that observe one of their fellow officers engaging in abusive behavior have to intervene or report on that. So that's part of that package that's going to be pretty significant. A big factor that colored a lot of housing and land use was one of the big focuses of the legislature for the last four years. And one of the subtitles of this last session was the fight between construction trade unions and the BIA. And construction trades demanded amendments to all the bills requiring skilled and trained provisions in any project. And so many of the bills in the housing packages didn't make it to the governor's desk because they had these, what the building industry considered poison pills. So we'll have to see if that resolves itself over the course of the next several months. Much of policy discussions in Sacramento since we did Prop 26 has shifted to the budget arena. So we literally had 80-plus budget trailer bills. And so instead of having things going through the legislative process, through the regular process in a bill, a lot of things end up going through the budget process. So this year was no exception to that rule. So clearly wildfire and drought were very big discussions this year. And I guess in the category of good news from Sacramento, the budget surplus that the legislature found themselves in when they came back from the COVID situation was about $80 billion above what they projected. So the budget this last year was very significantly, much more robust. And I guess the good news is that we're two months into the budget year that we're currently in. So budget, state fiscal year starts on July 1. We are $3.5 billion ahead of where they thought we were going to be when they did pass the budget in June. So I guess the good news for us is looking forward. There may be opportunities for some projects for Burbank and others. So highlights of the budget, there was $12 billion made available for homelessness over two years. So that will be funding that we'll look to see if we can get. Drought funding, $4.6 billion over three years. And importantly, the reserve is, the state reserve is about $25 billion. So we're approaching about 12% of the state general fund budget is in reserve. So we're in a very good shape. Wildfire was $1.5 billion. I know that we have some areas that interface with wildfire, and so that's going to be important to us. Climate change, though, there's $3.6 billion for climate resiliency, and so we'll look for those funding. A lot of those funds have not been available yet, but they've been allocated to departments. Broadband is something that is still a big issue on the governor's desk. Big pieces of legislation have not been acted on. They're part of that 350 bills that haven't been acted on. But there's $6 billion for the last mile and the middle mile, missing mile, to help connect our communities to broadband. $1.75 billion for homelessness, including $600 million for planning for local governments for sustainable community planning. So the other highlight I'd note that we're very paying close attention to is there's, for the first time in a long time, there's actual money for libraries. There's $390 million for library grants. And I know with our need for central, this will be something that we'll be focusing attention on. $2 billion for local streets and roads. And the governor and the legislature decided to defer discussions on what they're going to do on high-speed rail. So that will be a discussion for next January. So with that, I think I'll turn it over to Kira, and she can go through the housing pieces that I know we want to have discussion about.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council. I just wanted to take a few minutes to go through four of the major housing bills that have been signed by the governor this year. And I think there's a PowerPoint presentation. If they, somebody, I think somebody was going to pop that up for me. There we go. So wanted to go through the four of the major housing bills that were assigned this year by the governor. These are all going to be law. They will, implementation will begin on January 1 of the new year. So SB 8910 and AB 215. The major provision of SB 8 by Senator Skinner is to extend the Housing Crisis Act of 2019 by five years, from 2025 to 2030. And the Housing Crisis Act, which you may remember was enacted in 2019 by, with SB 330 was the bill, also by Senator Skinner, is one of several housing production streamlining bills over the last several years. The bill created a new preliminary application for housing projects, and it's essentially a snapshot of the project. And once the developer submits the preliminary application, the number of public hearings on the project is significantly limited. The local agency is prohibited from applying new rules or standards to the project, and nearly all project-related fees are frozen in place. Developers have two and a half years to begin construction and not be subject to any new fee, including an affordable housing fee. And my understanding from talking to your staff earlier this week is that you have, I think, about two projects right now that may qualify under SB 330 that are in the pipeline. Next slide. SB 9 by Pro Tem Atkins, as you are probably all very well aware, requires the city to ministerially approve either or both a housing development of no more than two units or duplex in a single-family residential zone and/or the subdivision of a parcel zone for residential use into two approximately equal parcels, commonly called a lot split. In addition to the two units per lot noted above, a developer could also add an ADU or a junior ADU to the lot to create a maximum of four units per lot. There are some exceptions to this, and we'll get to that in just a moment. There are some requirements to qualify under, qualify as a project under SB 9. The parcel must be located within a city that includes some portion of an urbanized area or urban cluster for which Burbank qualifies. Next slide. And the bill also prohibits a, there we go, the bill also prohibits the development or parcel that is to be subdivided from being located on any of the following. So prime farmland, land identified for conservation, so a natural community conservation plan, land within very high fire severity zones, hazardous waste, et cetera. So the next slide, please. Additionally, a project will not qualify for SB 9 streamlining if the project would demolish or alter rent-restricted housing, or housing that has been subject of an Ellis Act eviction in the past 15 years, or that has been occupied by a tenant in the last three years. The developer can also not demolish more than 25% of the exterior walls of an existing structure unless the local ordinance allows greater demolition, or if the site has not been occupied by a tenant in the last three years. And on the city side, the bill prohibits the city from requiring more than one parking space per unit and any parking requirements if the parcel is located within a half-mile of either a high-quality transit corridor or a major transit stop, or if there's a car-share vehicle located within one block of the parcel. Next slide. The bill also requires the project applicant to sign an affidavit stating that the applicant intends to occupy one of the housing units as their principal residence for three years. And it allows local governments to limit the development to two units on a parcel and are not required to permit an ADU or a junior ADU in addition to the two units per parcel under the bill. And finally, a city may deny a development application if there is a written finding that the project would create specific adverse impact on health and safety or the physical environment that there is no way to mitigate. Well, there are additional technical provisions of the bill. This should give you a fairly good overview. And the intent of this law is twofold. First is to break down existing what are known as barriers to additional housing and to increase the overall housing supply. The bill is not likely to result in a significant increase in affordable housing or even any affordable housing in some communities. Instead, the intent of SB 9 is really to increase the housing supply by gently increasing density through the addition of duplexes, townhomes, and ADUs in existing residential neighborhoods. The addition, however, the addition of up to four units where one sits today is potentially an extraordinary shift in local land use policy when paired with a ministerial approval in SB 9. And that said, while we think that developments for application, development applications for ADUs will continue to boom as they have in your community, in the short term, we don't think that SB 9 is going to cause a major surge in development. And this is for a couple of reasons. The local market prices and development costs will play a very large role in determining where a project is financially viable, and physical constraints such as small lot sizes can also play a role. Additionally, SB 9, we think, will be very dependent on an individual homeowner's ability to finance the project and their desire to undergo the change on the property. Next slide. And then one more. Sorry about that. There we go. SB 10, which was authored by Senator Weiner, is an opt-in bill, and it allows the city to pass an ordinance that is not subject to SEQA to upzone for any parcel for up to 10 units of residential density. If the parcel is located in a transit-rich a transit-rich area, a jobs-rich area, or an urban infill site. This is often option for cities that want to upzone, but is not a requirement under the law. And our understanding in talking with your staff earlier this week is that probably isn't a good fit for the city at this time. Next slide. And finally, we thought it was important to add on a slide on AB 215 by Assemblymember 2. This bill was, for the most of the year, a bill on adequate progress towards meeting Rena goals. And then in August, the bill was gutted and became a brand-new language, brand-new bill, about enforcement of housing laws in California. And the new law is pretty big. So we just wanted to make sure you are aware. It increases the enforcement authority of HCD in relation to violations of state housing laws. And it does this by expanding the scope of housing law violations to include provisions or laws like the Housing Crisis Act, so SB 330 that we talked about with SB 8, SB 35, and several other laws for which the, for which HCD is required to notify the jurisdiction and can provide notice to the state attorney general. It also allows HCD to hire outside counsel for cases that the attorney general, state attorney general declines to represent HCD, but for which HCD would like to continue to pursue. It also creates a new statute of limitations of three years for actions related to compliance with the city or city's housing element. And it adds an additional 30-day public comment period to the first draft revision of the housing element, with an additional 10-day period for the city to consider and incorporate public comments. And it's important to know that this last bullet point about the 30-day public comment period will not apply to this round of your Rena cycle. It will, however, apply to the next round. The conversation in Sacramento about addressing the lack of housing production is now on both sides. The production side through bills like SB 8, 9, 10, and ones that have come through in previous years. And it's also now about beefing up on the enforcement side with a bill like AB 215. With that, I'm going to stop and answer any questions.
Councilmember Springer, you want to start? You want to start, Councilmember Springer? Hello? I can't hear you, Councilmember Springer. Can somebody help her out?
Thank you.
Oh.
No, no, no.
Would you like to start, Councilmember Springer? Because I know housing, you're all over up in Sacramento. So I'd like you to take the lead on this conversation first.
Okay, I have a question about Senate Bill 9. Items 8, 9, and 10. And like, for example, item 9 provides that a local government shall not be required to permit more than two units on a parcel. So SB 9 just ministerially allows two on, on the lot split, right? Say?
Yes.
One lot in, okay.
Yeah. So what, the bill actually just allows the two units per lot, but under existing law, so SB 9 is really layered on existing housing laws. So it would allow, if the city allows it, someone to go in then and add an ADU and then potentially a junior ADU if the city approves that or allows that. But the city can say no to the ADU and a junior ADU on that lot and limit it to two units per parcel.
Okay. And so that's what Adam, item 10 does. It just clarifies that a little bit more.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Mayor Frutus, that's all for right now. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Councilmember Springer. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Nice to see you again. Unfortunately, I didn't make the trip up to Sacramento, but.
We missed you.
Yeah, I'm sure you did. It's always good to see you and talk to you. So in regards to, what is the difference of a house with an ADU in the back versus a duplex?
So a duplex is connected by one interior wall. So an ADU typically, an ADU would be maybe it's part of your garage if it's detached from the house. And sometimes you can have what's called a junior ADU, which is typically 500 square feet or smaller. But that's defined because it is attached to the actual house, the unit. So a duplex is sharing a wall. So you're right there.
So you're allowed to do that?
Yes, under this bill. Uh huh. You could do it in one of two ways. There's sort of two options. So the first option is that you could take on one lot, on your existing lot, and take your house and turn it into a duplex. So you'd have two units. And then if the city were to allow it, you can do an ADU and potentially a junior ADU. So up to four units. If you then, the other option under the bill is that you can split your lot into two lots. And on each lot, on the first lot, you would, you could flip your house into a duplex. On the second lot, you could put one unit, or you could also put a duplex. And then you could potentially add on top of that ADU or JADU if the city were to allow it.
Right.
There's, there's a portion of this bill that, that says you will do it, and another portion that says if the city were to allow it.
Right. Yes. Yeah, the city can say, the city can limit on the ADUs and junior ADUs. That's where, that's the piece. It's the ministerial approval under SB 9 applies to the duplex or to the, to the lot split.
You know, there's been a lot of discussion here in Burbank in regards to SB 35. I know you didn't touch much on it. And I know I went to affect what Jerry first in 2018.
Yeah.
So it's been in place for three years, but it really hadn't been brought up in Burbank until recently. So can you get into that at all? I mean, I read your digest version of what, if possible, or not?
So I can give you an overview of what SB 35 does, or what about the law. I don't know. And I'll defer to Amy and to your other staff in terms of any local impacts, because I'm not terribly familiar with a project that is.
Well, just in general, I don't want to talk about a specific project.
Yeah. So SB 35 is one of the bills. It was, there was a very large package of bills. I believe it was 19 bills that went through that year. And it was one of them. And it is a streamlining bill that provided a project meets very specific criteria and complies with the existing standards within the city. And one of those standards, just so that you know, is that the project would have to pay prevailing wage in the community. So it does have the labor component that David was talking about. Then it gets streamlined approval. And it's, it was very specifically by Senator Weiner, who was the author of the bill, going after cities that were not meeting their certain, certain levels of Rena. And so if you were, not Rena, excuse me, your levels of very low housing and I think it was some moderate and very low housing. So it was, if you are one of those cities, then SB 35 kicked in. So it was a little bit of a stick approach at housing that was done in, at that time. There had been some projects. There's not really good, hard data across the state on SB 35 in terms of how successful the law has been. And there's a bill on the governor's desk right now that would, that would actually have cities be in their annual progress report to HCD be providing data very specifically on bills like SB 35 and SB 9 and SB 330 to look at the data statewide in terms of how, how are these laws working? So that's a very, very quick general overview of it.
So now you're, you're, go ahead, David.
Well, I was gonna say, there's an affordability component to SB 35 as well. So you have to meet the affordability component to get into the, to invoke SB 35. And the big thing with SB 35 is you avoid the CEQA process. You accept the labor element. And, and then you, you get a streamlined city approval as well.
So then this obviously takes away local control.
Yes.
Another, another many steps of taking away local control.
The death of a thousand cuts. This is, you know, started with Jerry Brown, and he was very frugal. And so when he wanted to, you know, they, they found the, the perfect mix. Like when you, you don't want to spend a lot of money, and we want to reduce costs of building housing. So the only thing we could do is cut out local control. So that started under the Brown administration, and they, you know, they've continued it to say, if we only streamlined and cut out aesthetics and cut out community input and cut out all these things, housing would be cheaper, which is not true. I mean, our, our processes are, you know, I can't remember the numbers, but design is 5% of the cost of the project, and community review is 7% of it. You know, labor and land is the bulk of it. So, you know, they're, they're nibbling at us. And I think the result is going to be a community that's going to be not very happy with what they're going to get. And they're, I, I'll get off my soapbox, but local government has approved 400,000 housing units in the state of California right now that the developers haven't pulled the permits for. So 400,000 units that you and other cities have said, go ahead, pull the permit. But they, developers, they don't, it doesn't pencil out, so they're not pulling the permits. But, I mean, we've done our job as far as setting the table for people as best we can. And anyway, I'll, I'll be quiet.
Thank you. Now, another, David, you mentioned the poison pill. In some of these bills that the governor wrote, it's signed because of that?
Yeah. It was, I mean, the, the, the battle between labor and the construction and, and the building industry. You know, the, the labor wanted skilled and trained on all, trained on all these projects. And the building industry just said, it won't pencil out. We're not going to, if, if this becomes law, these things are not going to be viable. And so the speaker said, I want you to go back and, and iron out your differences between labor and the building industry to make sure you come up with something. So that's kind of what stalled some of the bills that came through on housing to say, you know, get your house in order, and we're not going to entertain this until you come up with a solution. So we're waiting for that.
Great. One more thing, last thing, Mr. Mayor. Your comments about having monies available out there, especially for libraries. I want you to bring all the money that are available to Burbank, okay? We are first, and we're a B, so we're pretty high up in your, I know you represent several other cities, but we're B, so we should be the ones that get the monies first, at least offered to. But anyway, so keep Burbank in mind. I appreciate seeing you, and I appreciate talking to you. Stay safe.
Thank you.
Take care.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Anthony?
Just to reiterate, it's Alhambra, Azusa, Bankersfield, and Burbank. So we need to come right down the line.
And we don't represent any of those other A cities.
All right, that's great. That's great. It's good to know.
You're it.
Real quick, just watered-down version, SB 9 says you must allow two, but you may allow up to four. Is that what I'm hearing?
No, you, you must allow four.
Four, two.
You must allow a lot split that could be four units on the single-family lot. You don't have to go any further than four. If you chose to, you could say, I'm splitting this lot on the corner, and they're going to build two duplexes. And then if you chose, you could say, there's enough room on this part of this parcel. They, they're going to put an ADU. And so that would be five. But that's your choice.
And the owner occupancy has to be on one of those, say, all five of those units can build. You only have to live in one of those five units.
Yeah.
Well, you have to sign an affidavit that you intend to occupy it. So where, when that amendment came through, we went, how is that going to be enforced? So, I mean, anyway, we're kind of skeptical that that's going to be very effective.
Anyway, so why would someone split a lot unless they intend to sell that lot? Like, what's the thinking there?
They're leaving.
Okay. So if, well, or at least they're selling off half of their.
They're selling off half of their property.
Property. So then if somebody else moves into that, so if someone buys that and moves in, does that qualify as owner occupied, and then this guy can bail?
No, no. And you can't, once you've split a lot, you can't go ahead and split it again under SB 9.
Okay. All right.
And the other, the other piece is that in order to stop commercial development on a street, so if you have a house that's, or excuse me, a parcel that's taking advantage of SB 9, the two parcels on the side, a developer couldn't do a string of homes, where they did two or three in a row, where they would try to do all the, develop on each one of them. So you can only do that parcel. The ones right next to on either side, you cannot do under SB 9.
Who can't do? That developer?
That same developer, that homeowner. Yeah, or that developer.
Okay. But if the neighbor wants to do, if they look next door and go, oh, I want to do that, they can do it?
They could do it.
Okay. All right. So this isn't, okay, so they're trying to limit commercial enterprise from going in. All right. So you're saying it's limited by the homeowner's ability to raise the capital, take out a second mortgage, do all this construction on their own, with the intent of, say, selling off half their land for retirement or something like that, or giving it to their kids?
Yeah.
Okay. So you, you, in your opinion, don't expect a whole lot of this coming into Burbank anyways?
We think, at least in the short term, we don't think it's going to, there's going to be a whole rush to do this. There certainly could be developers that figure out how to do this effectively as people have figured out how to do, you know, flip a house or something along those lines, that they could find particular parcels that sort of, that would be very right for this kind of development, that they may approach a homeowner and say, we think this would be right for this. We think that you could split your lot. You could make some money. You could sell off the other half. You could turn this into a duplex. But the thing about SB 9 that makes it different from other types of housing production streamlining bills that we've seen, is that it is very dependent on the neighborhood, on the street, and frankly, on the homeowner who wants to do this. Somebody that's going to turn their single-family house into a duplex or add an ADU, that, that's someone that agrees that they want somebody else to be living right next to them or in their backyard. And so there is a human component to this that is very unpredictable in terms of what it might look like five years from now. And so we think that there could be development, but at this point, it's very difficult to tell just based on, on pure data and numbers that are out there.
And with all of the restrictions on rental properties and renters, you don't imagine property owners or property management companies taking advantage of this, because they, they're going to have a heck of a time, if they have a tenant, to deal with this law. Is that right?
I think two things. You couldn't do short, first of all, you could, you cannot make one of these a short-term rental. There is a provision in the law that says if you're going to rent out one of the units, it has to be for longer than 30 days. The second provision is, the second piece of that, I think it's, I don't know, it would have to be, because they, they would have the owner occupancy requirement on each of these developments. And so I haven't really thought too much about a rental company or property management company coming in. But we have to, oh, go ahead.
I was going to say, it's, it's dependent, because the state law is very specific and doesn't necessarily capture all the mom and pops. Like, doesn't capture a small, single. If it's an LLC or something else, it might capture it. So may depend how, what it looks like. And so part of it wouldn't be, if you do a duplex, it might not look all that different than what's happening now with people putting ADUs and their rentals. So I, I mean, unless they're building it for a family member, most of this will end up being a rental for that, that principal owner. And I think if, Kara, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the owner occupancy as it is, is if you actually do the lot split.
Yes.
So it.
Yeah. So it, but they, if you did a lot split, then they have to choose to do.
To be on one.
Yeah. And they have to intend. And it's, it's a little hard to enforce intent.
Well, then that leads me to my other question. What if they've already built an ADU on the site? Can they split the lot again and build another ADU? Or do they have to split it along the ADU line?
So if they've already done an ADU, then first of all, they have to have the appropriate amount of space to do a lot split. So under the law, you have to have enough to put two 1,200, minimum of two 1,200 square foot units in order to do the lot split. And it has to be equally split. So a lot of that is going to be how it depended on the size of the lot. They have a very large lot. They might be able to pull off still doing a lot split. But they're going to have to meet all the requirements for the size.
Okay. Okay. And then my last question on SB 10, I know we talked a lot about it being an opt-in. Do we, if, if a city chooses to opt-in, do they have to go all the way up to 10 units? Can they do a, a smaller?
Yes.
Okay.
You could do a smaller.
So is there a process where a city could adopt a version of SB 10 that is more favorable or streamlined than SB 9 and the lot split and all of that mess, sort of to entice people in a direction?
Yeah, they're, they're a little bit different from the standpoint that SB 10 is restricted by location. So you have to be near, within a half mile of transit, you know, or that, those provisions. But then the other part of SB 10 is it's really looking at a true multifamily. So three to 10 units, as opposed to a single. three to 10 units as opposed to a single family that might turn into a duplex. So in theory, you could do in one part of the city, the upstanding under SB 10 and get some streamlining in terms of you don't have to go through CEQA. But SB nine is more geared at really intentionally a single family, existing, single family zone neighborhoods.
Okay, I got you. Okay, thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Schultz?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And then thank you both for the excellent presentation. Very nice to meet you the other week in person. I, I do have a couple of questions on housing and that's what I plan to go through and then I'm going to let the mayor go. But at the tail end of it, I do want to ask about four other bills and I just wanted to give you plenty of time to pull up your notes on it. I wanted to ask about Senate Bills two and 16. And I also wanted to ask about Assembly Bills 43 and 362. And, and just sort of the synopsis for everybody watching at home about the status of those and what those could potentially mean for Burbank. But back to eight, nine, and 10, which is what we're talking about. So just to run through my list here, so Senate Bill eight essentially extends SB 330 through January 1 of 2030.
Yes.
Correct. Senate Bill nine, I had a couple of questions. So one of the, one of the provisions of Senate Bill nine is, is I understand it, is that it prohibits demolition or alteration of rent restricted housing. So my question is, does the bill specify, you know, are, is, are we talking just about municipalities with local rent control? What about housing that would be, I mean, right now we have Assembly Bill 1482, right? Which applies statewide. So would any of that fall under, under that provision of SB nine?
Well, anything that was built with redevelopment that had a covenant would clearly be out. And then anything that was under a, a rent control ordinance in certain cities obviously would be out. And then anything that had been rented as, used as a rental unit for the last three years is not out, is not in. So that shrinks the universe to, you know, really single family owner occupied residents.
Okay, thank you. The next question I had was, so Senate Bill nine talks about how a city is authorized to deny a project if there's a finding made that it would have a specific adverse impact on health and safety. Are there any, under the bill, guiding criteria or elements that need to be found? And if so, what are those? Or even just a synopsis of them? You don't need to go point by point, but just generally speaking, what would we need to find?
The bill language is, let me just pull it up, but I don't believe it's extremely clear, but Amy, you look like you might have an answer.
I don't have the other statute in front of me, but it refers back, this is language we see in a lot of the housing bills. And it's in density bonus. It's in numerous housing bills and it refers back to another statute that does have more criteria to it, if I can say it that way. And I'm sorry, I, I did not bring my notes when I looked at this. I sort of jotted some notes down for those others and I went back and looked, but we can send you that, but there is a statute that it refers back to, I believe. I've read all these bills at once, so I'm hoping I'm not confusing, but I don't think I am. I believe that's the case. And Fred, if you know different than me, I'm happy for you to jump in, but I think there is, it's, it has more meaning than what those few words mean.
Yeah.
And I can, I'll, I'll add, and I don't know if the, the consultants can also assist, but there's specific reference to the building official making findings based on the preponderance of evidence that the proposed project would have specific adverse impacts. And then it talks about public health, safety, physical environment. And I think the key thing is for which there is no feasible method to satisfactorily mitigate or, or avoid the specific adverse impact. So the bar is high, I guess I would, I would say. And similar language is found also in, I think we mentioned SB 330 and similar languages in SB 35. So I think what, what I would say in general is that the state is basically saying that just saying that it's, you know, an adverse impact to the general health, safety and welfare is not enough. We have to provide a lot of data that basically shows that beyond a shadow of a doubt, this, this is going to create an impact to the community under these guidelines.
And Councilmember, we can send us to your staff, the, in the actual language of SB nine, there's this very specific cross reference. So we can get that to you, so that you can actually pull up the actual cross reference.
And I was going to say, we can provide that to council.
Yeah.
That'd be terrific. Thank you. So sticking with SB nine, one other question that I had jotted down. So with regards to the requirement that the applicant executes an affidavit, right, of a, of owner occupancy, what's the, I mean, if, if they don't do it, if they, if they leave sooner than three years, what, what's the recourse? I, I don't think there is one, right?
No, I'm not aware of a, well, I mean, I, I would defer to City Attorneyland, but I'm not aware of any very specific recourse. And I think the other thing to understand about that is it's an affidavit that they intend to stay for three years, which makes it probably even more difficult.
On our, you know, we're going to have to look at the real language of the statute and analyze it under current housing occupancy standards that were in effect and are in effect for junior ADUs. We actually require that a covenant is, is recorded against the property. But if this truly uses that language of intent, we're going to have to really look at, is there a mechanism for us to, to be able to do a covenant that's recordable and will it mean anything? And so, and again, after the three year, I mean, they're only have to do it for three years. So that's the other part of that. But we would have to analyze whether we believe we could figure out a way to write an enforceable covenant or not, and we may not be able to. So that's something we'll, we'll have to look at as we go through these statutes.
Okay, great. Thank you. That, my, my thought as well. Last question that I have about Senate Bill nine. So when I'm looking at some of the, I'm going to call it loosely, the exemption criteria, the instances where we don't have to approve the project. And I know you covered it in the slide, but I'm just, I'm just looking at the bill text because it's easier for me. So it specifically exempts property that's located in a historic district or property that's included on the state historic resources inventory. But it goes on to say, or it's within a site that's designated or listed as a city or county landmark or historic property or district pursuant to city ordinance. So I know that we have, and Amy, you can correct me if I'm, if I'm wrong here. I know we have our 2011 historic preservation ordinance, if I'm remembering correctly. So my question would be, is that sort of, as a council, as a community, our exclusive vehicle to identify property for preservation against SB nine? Or is there other opportunities there that we could consider?
I believe that your opportunities is under our current statute, our, our current ordinance. And we were at one point looking at, it's, it's not easy to get something on one of those other lists. And even our current ordinance is driven by owner request. So if you go through our whole process, that it's driven by the owner's request to do it. And that's how, how it's currently been applied.
Okay, thank you very much. And I just realized I called you by your first name. My apologies, Madam City Attorney. Try to keep the formality up. Back to our, to our advocates, almost done. So Assembly Bill 215, what, what does this mean practically speaking for Burbank? I mean, I get that HCD is going to have more, more resources, more tools, if you will, but what, what could this in theory mean for our community?
Well, I, I think, I mean, the, the big thing on SB 215 is really less about Burbank in particular and more about communities that are essentially thumbing their nose at housing laws and are doing, and are violating housing laws. And really what 215 is about is allowing HCD in the cases where the attorney general chooses not to take the case and on behalf of HCD, it allows HCD to go and hire outside counsel and continue to pursue the case. I will defer to, to your city attorney in terms of what that might very specifically mean for the city. But I think the general takeaway from 215 is that they are getting more serious about enforcement up in Sacramento and an additional three years of statute limitation on housing element, that can be a big deal because it is a little bit of looking over your shoulder for three years. And, but, but, you know, keep in mind, this is really intended to enforcement on some of those cities that are just simply thumbing their nose at housing requirements.
But I would say, I think the disconcerting part to me is that they can hire outside counsel after the AG has declined to, to do.
Yeah.
And that's disconcerting. And, and I can make an affront to attorneys because I am one. You can always hire an attorney to file any lawsuit, almost. I mean, we have ethical obligations, so I don't want to sound that terrible, but you know, we, we sometimes say, you know, yes, you can be sued. I think the other disconcerting part is there have been instances where HCD has written letters to cities even before they've taken action based on the conversation of the council during a meeting, actually looking and sending a letter. And we have shared that with council one other time, as well as they have also looked and pursued people's, especially this happened even during the pandemic, people's, cities, like decisions on how they were handling something or new ordinances and going back and saying, we're not so sure this is, like, you really should be doing it this way. So that's what I think, even though I hear what our lobbyists so eloquently state, and I agree, it's to go after, but the more, from my point of view, they have been given more and more authority and this just balloons it in a way. And, and we'll see whether they take that tack of looking at people's cities, I shouldn't say people's city or counties, local government, web pages to see what we're, what we have and how compliant we look. And I, I think that is disconcerting. So that's just my opinion. And I can voice my opinion since I'll be leaving soon. So this isn't a reflection on the city of Burbank, it's a reflection on my own personal feelings on that one.
Thank you. And then don't remind us that you're leaving. One, just one more question, Mr. Mayor, and then I'll be done on the housing topic. I have a few other things at the, at the tail end, but I, I just want to talk big picture, you know, now we've been debriefing about the current legislative session and, you know, it, it's kind of like elections are always coming up. It's never too early to start thinking about the next legislative session. This is, there's no answer I'm looking for in particular. I just, you, you two are the experts and you're fighting hard for us in Sacramento. So my question is, it feels like we keep fighting and asking Sacramento to hear our concerns and essentially they're not listening. So in the next year, I mean, is, and I know every community around California is facing the same thing. So my question is, can we expect more of the same or are there different tracks that we can be pursuing? I mean, are there other things that we can do other than just saying, please listen to us, please don't? You know, is there dissenting voices in the legislature that want to take a different approach? I guess I'm just curious for your insight on, on that.
Well, I'll throw.
You know, go ahead.
Laura Friedman did vote no on SB nine. She did listen to Burbank and the other communities and, you know, it was a hard vote for her because she was one of four Democrats in the assembly that voted no on SB nine. That said, you know, it's super, super ultra majorities in both houses. And so the ability to use the argument of local control is not going to resonate with a very progressive leaning body. So, you know, it's going to continue to be difficult and there are, I mean, we had ACA seven by Mr. Murasucci down from Torrance that was going to say, local government ordinances from charter cities trump the legislature. Now, there are some voices of progressive thought and there are some moderate Democrats, but they're not going to ever be in the majority in the current, in, in either house. So it's going to be a very difficult slog. And we've continued to sing the song about like, let's reward the good actors and punish the bad ones. Let's separate the people that are not doing the right thing and really rather than having legislation by anecdote, if somebody does something stupid, then we all have to pay the price for that foolish behavior. So we continue to push that and we'll continue to say that we should have legislation looking at rewards rather than punitive legislation, especially when it comes to land use and housing decisions.
Perfect. Thank you so much for that. I, you know, perfect. That's, that's exactly how I feel. Appreciate everything that you two are doing and I'll, I'll come back later with other questions. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, my turn. So Senate Bill nine and trying to find the loopholes to protect our city. So because we have a hillside, I wonder if that would qualify for the city of Burbank on the hillside where it says land within very high fire zones unless the site. No? How come?
Oh, sorry, Mr. Mayor. So in order to qualify for the high fire severity zone, you actually have to be in a high fire severity zone. I believe you're a tier two is what I understood in conversations earlier today with staff. So you would have to, you would have to be in the highest level. And staff can correct me if I'm, if I'm incorrect on that.
Okay. And then the other one is earthquake fault. How close do we have to be to an earthquake fault to kind of say, hey, you can't build here because we, you know, we're still next to whatever fault name is close to the city of Burbank. We're only 17 square miles. I'm just thinking outside the box, what can we do to protect our neighbors and our neighborhoods from overdevelopment? Is that something that's been used or have you guys talked about that? What are your thoughts?
I would defer, on my end, I'll defer to staff on earthquake zones. I think that they would probably have a better sense of fault lines within the community on that issue.
All right. And then outside of the legislative session, school funding, are they increase, the governor increasing funding for local schools?
Yes.
By how much more out of curiosity?
Yeah, I didn't talk about it during my discussion of the state budget because I focused on city issues, but yes, the governor, they did robust funding for pre-K and for big increases for the UC and the CSU and the community college system. K-12 got a big bump. So I, I, we can get you the specifics if you want on what they, they got, but I think that they, they did fairly well with $80 billion surplus. The schools did get their share.
Okay. And then our assembly members moving forward, I just want to know any updates with her legislation regarding taking away local control for parking and commercial? And I think it was, I think AB 1402, we took a position. Oh, thank you for correcting me, 1401. And we, as a city, a majority of the council voted to not support that. So I was wondering if you can update where she might be at? And I know she's given certain cities in Northern California exemptions. I want to see where Burbank might get an exemption too, since she represents us.
Yeah, that, that bill died on suspense. So that bill, 1401, as a vehicle, is no longer with us. Will she come back with something else? Probably. Her exemptions were for very, very small rural cities. So I, I doubt that in her mind that Burbank would be in the same category as, you know, cities in rural Northern California that really didn't have a, a need for off street parking. So, so we'll see. I, I, I mean, I don't know if Kara's got any other thoughts on 1401, but, but I imagine something like that's going to come back. She's, as you know, she's the chair of the Assembly Transportation Committee. So this is a subject near and dear to her heart.
And any thoughts from you guys as our lobbyists regarding her, her vote on the funding for high speed rail, which she kind of went in conflict with the governor? Wonder what your thoughts are?
It was interesting. I was, I, I know that she had just done that when we were up there in Sacramento and it was a little surprising to me, but, but I know that there's an awful lot of significant amount of members in the legislature that thinking, that are thinking that we could use some of this money sooner for more benefit. So we haven't had the conversation with her about what exactly was she thinking about repurposing some of the high speed rail money? But the entire discussion on high speed rail got put off until. got put off until this fall or next year. So I imagine as Chair of Transportation, she'll have a lot of say in what happens next, and I think it will be interesting to see where she goes.
All right. I will defer now to Councilmember Schultz for hopefully your last few questions, so we can move this, oh, oh, Vice Mayor, follow, okay, Councilmember Springer followed by Vice Mayor.
Yes, um, thank you. I have a few more housing questions that came up. Is, how do, what does floor area ratio, how does that factor in to all of this, like, say, for example, SB nine?
So I might just defer to staff on a couple of specifics here, but there are requirements for the amount of square footage and the, for the different buildings that can go on each parcel. And I think there is, I got to look back at my notes in terms of there's a requirement on FAR and SB nine.
Kyra, there's a reference to the city can't preclude for something less than 800 square feet-
That's what it is.
For the, for the two units that could be built as a duplex.
Yeah. So that's 800 square feet for each unit in the duplex?
You, you couldn't preclude a, a, a unit, one of the units being built through this process, to be anything less than 800 square feet?
But what about floor area ratio, like say-
The floor area ratio would be the 800 square feet, yeah. So, so in other words, Mayor Springer, what you may be asking is, if you had a project, let's say a property, that was already pushing the limits of the city's floor area ratio, could they build a development under SB nine? They, they could still, we would still have to allow them to build the unit in compliance with SB nine, even if it exceeded our floor area ratio?
So say a 6,000-square-foot lot, 40% on each is, doesn't apply?
It, it is, it's a bit of a moving target, just because it all depends, right? If someone splits the lot, it's not going to be a 6,000-square-foot lot, so it's going to be, it could be 40% of the original lot, but then someone's going to be able to build a new unit, and the new unit has to be, we have to allow them to 800, and if it even exceeds that number, there's still, it's still ministerial approval. So there's, there's basically, it's more in the, it's more leverage to building the unit, facilitating it, than precluding it being built. So our FAR limits would be, would take second fiddle to allowing the unit to be built as a duplex.
So they don't apply, basically?
It, it is, in essence exempt, in other words, the requirement to allow the unit to be built at those minimum square footages trumps the city's local FAR limitation.
Okay, thank you. And David, you, you talked about ACA seven kind of in the past tense, sort of that, like you expressed doubt, or?
No, no, it's, it's, it's alive. You know, ACAs and SCAs don't have the same limits on legislation as far as timetables go, so it is viable until the legislature goes away next, next year. So, but, you know, they, getting something on the ballot is really a summer of even-year discussions, so that's something that will probably, all the, the bond discussions and the ACAs and the SCAs, all those initiatives are going to be hotter topics come late spring, early summer.
Okay, thank you. Um, thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Presentation.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Couple of questions on smoking measures or bills. I noticed the governor signed a couple of them on vaping or e-cigarettes. Could you provide us some information on that?
You want me to step in, David?
Yeah.
Sure. So, yeah, there, there were a few bills that were signed on tobacco, and there was, there were not a lot of them, however, there is a referendum coming up on the ballot in 2022, and so that has largely cleared the deck on a lot of bills related to tobacco. There have been few and far between, I think that there was a bill relating to tobacco cessation on, that has to be offered if you're in a substance abuse treatment facility that was signed in August. There's another bill on the governor's desk dealing with some of the funding from, from vaping products, tobacco, for the tax on vaping products, that's going to go to some rural communities. But they're not really bills that are focused on, on kids and tobacco. They're largely kind of more on the administrative side at this point.
We don't see any progress on vaping as far as trying to eliminate them somehow or reduce them?
Well, the, the industry, so we supported, as did many others, supported SB 793 by Jerry Hill that banned flavored products, and that was a great bill signed by Governor Newsom. The industry raised the money to start a referenda to repeal that law, and that will be on the ballot of November 2022. So that's, no pun intended, suck the air out of all the tobacco legislation, because people are saying, don't put anything on the ballot, or don't put anything before the legislature that's going to make the tobacco industry more successful in repealing the flavored tobacco ban. So everybody's kind of waiting to find out till November 2022 about what is going to happen with the repeal of, of 793. The industry has raised $21 million to defeat our flavored tobacco ban, and so I, we're, I mean, get ready, ads are coming, you're going to see, you know, this is all about rich people and hookahs and cigars and, anyway. So, yeah, that's a sense of frustration amongst many of us that wanted to see some more progressive anti-tobacco teen protection. I mean, the vaping stuff is just egregious. I, I should probably be quiet about my personal opinions here with two daughters, but, but yeah, no, it's horrible, and, but right now, everything's kind of on hold until, until we get to the election of 2022.
Can you, is there any, where we can send a letter to as a council? I mean, I'm just bringing it up without discussing with colleagues, but just anything that you can recommend, or is too early still?
Well, I think continuing dialogue with our legislators about how important this issue is to the council. I mean, we're all, we all care about, you know, our, our youth, and so I would continue the dialogue with, with our legislators about how important this is, and see what the art of the possible is as we move further, further along, because, you know, November 2022 is not that far away.
True. Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Schultz, wrap it up.
You got it, Mr. Mayor, I'll be brief. So as promised, I just wanted a quick, just, you know, maybe a minute or so, update on those four bills, and they were again Senate Bill two, Senate Bill 16, Assembly Bill 43, and Assembly Bill 362. So any information you can share?
Sure, I could start off with the first three at least. So two and 16, two, Senate Bill two was Mr. Bradford's bill on police decertification, so that was part of the package of bills on police reform. 16 was also part of that package, and that was Senator Skinner's bill that was the follow-up from about a year ago that opens up records and trend, excuse me, records for police officers who have use of force, and that one was also signed as part of that package. The third bill, which is AB 43, and that's Assembly Member Friedman's bill on traffic safety, that bill is still on the governor's desk, so we're waiting, so it's got until Sunday or Saturday night at midnight to be signed. And then 362, see if David pulled that one up, as we were chatting.
I'm not as quick as you are.
We can get you an answer on that one very quickly. Apologize, because you did give that to us.
It's okay.
Um. Is this, you said AB or SB?
I'm sorry, it was Assembly Bill, AB 362, dealing with homeless shelters, if I understand.
Homeless shelters, yeah, yeah. And so that bill was chaptered, and so that one is now going to go into law, and that deals with safety regulations at homeless shelters.
Got you, thank you. My, my, my final question, Mr. Mayor, was just, as we're looking ahead to the next cycle, what do you perceive as the, the big issues that'll be facing the legislature next year, so that we, as a council, can start thinking early about how best to advocate for our position?
Well, on the good news front, there will be a budget surplus, so we'll be meeting with your staff and talking about opportunities that we may have there. Climate change clearly is going to be big, and unfortunately, the, you know, we're going to continue with the land use homelessness of housing discussions. Wildfire discussions will be probably, January, we'll have probably an early budget discussion about, you know, funding for things on wildfire and drought. So we've gotten a lot of good ideas about drought, recycled water, and other things from your staff, so we'll be working with your staff. Bail reform, I don't know whether the council cares about that, but that's going to be an issue coming up again where, with Senator Hertzberg, who's our, he owns a little smidge of Burbank, and he's doggone bone on that. High-speed rail, as I mentioned earlier, is going to be something that we're going to have to decide about where that goes, and if that's clearly important to Burbank on track alignment, where it goes, so, but it's going to be, you know, same old, same old, I think, for, for, for next year, so.
Thank you very much. Appreciate the presentation, that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Well, thank you so much. I guess I'd like to give the opportunity to City Manager, if you'd like to weigh in to the council or to our lobbyists, before we end this agenda item, sir? Your thoughts?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Emmanuel Jones, David, Kira, you guys always do a great job. One of the things that, as far as councils concerned, one of the things is we are working, departments are working with Kira and David, and we'll come back with our legislative platform for next year, so they, they're helping us with that right now, and then we'll come back at the end of the year, start of the year, so we can make those adjustments to our platform.
All right, well, thank you both for the update, and definitely, council members, thank you for your different thoughts and different, you know, bills and legislative updates, and I also want to take this time to publicly acknowledge our Assembly Member Laura Friedman for voting no on Senate Bill nine. Thank you so much to everybody, and moving on to the next agenda item, and it's the last one for the evening. The second report is an update on enforcement of the flavored tobacco ban. Will Assistant Community Development Director, Mr. Ron Takaguchi, please present the update? Good evening, sir, and welcome. And I got your name right.
Oh, yes, you did, Mr. Mayor, thank you very much, and good evening, Mayor Futelsen, Councilmember Ron Takiguchi, Assistant Community Development Director and City Building Official. And I'd like to introduce Ms. Carolyn Coats, our Building Administration Manager, who will present the report on this item tonight.
Good evening and welcome, Ms. Coats.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Vice Mayor, members of the City Council, Carolyn Coats from the Community Development Department. City Council adopted the flavored tobacco ban ordinance on October 15, 2019, and it went into effect on November 15, 2019. It banned the sale of flavored tobacco products except for hookah tobacco. And the ordinance set up a compliance schedule for Community Development Department staff to visit all licensed tobacco, tobacco retailers at random over a six-month period, beginning in May 2020. The shutdown period imposed by COVID-19, safer-at-home order delayed the start of those inspections. However, during this time, staff was enforcing the ordinance by responding to complaints and communicating ordinance requirements to retailers. We received two complaints in May 2020 regarding retailers that had not removed all of their flavored tobacco products. After we contacted them, they removed the items, and we've confirmed this through an inspection. Compliance checks began in October 2020. All of the 82 businesses that we have inspected so far have removed the flavored products from display, and staff expects to verify compliance for the remaining 12 licenses by the end of calendar year 2021. Afterwards, staff will continue to respond to complaints and monitor retailer compliance with the ordinance. Regarding sales to minors, state law and the city's retail tobacco sales ordinance prohibit the sale of any tobacco products to minors. The Police Department conducts decoy operations to enforce the prohibitions on both tobacco sales to minors and the sale of flavored tobacco products. The department conducted six operations in 2019, resulting in the issuance of five citations for the act of providing tobacco or cigarettes to minors. The Police Department suspended all planned operations in 2020 due to the inability to safely conduct operations during the pandemic. The department has conducted one operation so far in 2021, resulting in one case submitted to the city attorney's office for an alleged violation of the flavored tobacco sales ban. The filing decision on this case is pending. And as mentioned in the previous presentation, the state adopted SB 793 in August of last, of 2020, banning the sale of flavored tobacco products. It was supposed to go to effect January 1 of 2021, but this has been delayed by the referendum until the item can be voted on at the next general election in November 2022. State law is slightly less than the city's ordinance, because it allows the sale of flavored cigars and loose meat tobacco, but the state law does not preempt local governments from imposing greater restrictions, and so it should have passed, the city can still maintain its current more restrictive requirements. The city submitted a grant proposal to the California Department of Justice earlier this year for the 2020-2021 Tobacco Grant Program. Through a multi-departmental effort, the city would use the funding to provide targeted education to youth and minors on tobacco laws through a variety of outreach, enforcement, and compliance programs. The list of awardees was expected to be announced in August of 2021, but that announcement has been delayed. Previously, the city was awarded a grant in 2018 and used funds for enforcement operations and educational videos posted on social media that are, are still posted. In conclusion, staff continues to monitor compliance with the flavored tobacco sales ban ordinance. All inspected businesses have complied with the ordinance, and a minimal number of complaints have been received. The Police Department will continue to conduct enforcement operations to deter prohibited tobacco sales to minors and to enforce existing laws pertaining to the sale of flavored tobacco products. This concludes my presentation, I'm happy to answer your questions, and we also have Sergeant Michael Edwards from the Police Department available to answer questions.
Great, thank you very much, Ms. Coats, for the presentation. Vice Mayor, I'll call on you first, since we kind of worked on this, we had that first meeting, and see what your thoughts are, lead us in the discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, appreciate that. Thank you, Ms. Coats, and Mr. Ron, thank you very much, and I hear that this might be your last council meeting with us?
That is correct, Vice Mayor, and it's very bittersweet to lead such a dynamic city with great leadership. And I do thank all the council members for the opportunity in Burbank during this very dynamic time in our city. So my pleasure, exactly.
Well, thank you very much for your time and your service to Burbank, and wish you much success moving forward.
Thank you.
Coats, Ms. Coats, I see that in the report, it says that there were 95 licenses taken out, tobacco licenses?
Yeah, so we normally have around 100. Last year and year before, we had closer to 105, 110. We, we have lost a few retail, licensed retailers, possibly due to COVID over the past year, and so now we have 95.
So when we, when we go out, like you said, every six months, how many do we try and hit all of them at one time, or?
We do a couple each week, and we're almost done going through, visiting all of the retailers. And so when our inspectors go out, they've told us that the retailers are, they all are familiar with the ordinance, and then the inspector looks at the displays to ensure that they don't have any of the flavored tobacco products or menthol on, on display.
Okay, thank you very much. Once again, Mr. Takiguchi, thank you very much for being with Burbank for the talk.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Any other council member, this is a note and file, any other council member wish to weigh in, comment, question? Okay, seeing none. You know, for the last night, sir, that you're here, I went to my little books on Hooked on Phonics, and I practiced and practiced so I can pronounce correctly. On the last night, your name, so I didn't butcher it, but most-
But most important, thank you for everything you've done to help the city, and I do appreciate, and again, I'm sorry for those other meetings for butchering your name, but I practiced for tonight to make sure on your last night I pronounced your name correctly.
And indeed you did, Mr. Mayor, and I thank you and the council members and the executive team as well. My pleasure.
And best of luck in your next adventure, and hopefully we'll bump into you in the very near future. Thank you for your service to the people of Burbank.
Thank you.
Okay, council members, this is a time for brief council comments, including reporting on council committee assignments. Who would like to go first this evening? Looking for a volunteer, Councilmember Springer, thank you.
Yes, thank you. I attended the Tiny Homes Tour to Alexandria Park with Marcus Gonzalez and Patrick Prescott and Sona, our social worker with Joslyn, and the employee breakfast, which was very nice to go there and express my appreciation to our employees. I went on a transportation tour with Mary Cottone. We took MetroLink and Light Rail to Santa Monica and back to Universal, and then we took the pink route back to downtown Burbank. And of course, I went to the unveiling of the pink police car for breast cancer awareness and Saturday morning to the 2021 Walk of Fame. And that was very, was a very moving experience to honor Craig Hunter and Ron Sabatine for their commitment to Burbank. And this morning, Los Angeles County Commission on Local Government. And so we set some goals, things that we would look at, housing homelessness, mental health, rental assistance coming out of COVID, and among other things. So that that's it, thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Springer. Councilmember Schultz?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. On Thursday, September 30, I had a chance to swing by the employee appreciation breakfast. Excellent job putting it together, and I hope all the employees know how much they're appreciated by the council. Also had a chance to represent the council at the ribbon cutting for a Better Solution in Home Care, another wonderful addition to our business community. And then that night, I had the chance to meet with school board member Shar Toppett, and then several community members to continue the conversation about that tragic fatality on Glen Oaks, and just encourage them to stay tuned to the agenda forecast, and that'll be coming back at a later date for council. On Friday, I was with Councilmember Springer and the Vice Mayor for the unveiling of the Breast Cancer Awareness Vehicle. Saturday, again, I was with Councilmember Springer. Congrats again to Craig and Ron on their induction into the Walk of Fame. And then yesterday, Mr. Mayor, happy to join you in the midst of that lightning storm for the ribbon cutting for Chili John's. That's everything for me, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Anthony?
I think you skipped over the Vice Mayor, but I'll go, that's fine, I'll be quick. I also attended the employee breakfast on the 30th. It was great, they had these three bins out there, and when you were done with your breakfast, you had to sort it into compost, into recycling, and into actual trash. And I will tell you, the bin for actual trash that went to, that goes to the dump was so small. And while we were there, we had, you know, we were there almost three, three and a half, four hours. People were eating food, food. They changed out the compost bin and the recycling bin multiple times, and I think they only filled up one bin for the trash. It was incredible to watch, and I'm, you know, it's great to see that action happening in Burbank. Later on that day, I went to an open house for a place called Believe in Big Change, and it is a nonprofit that takes in mothers who are fleeing, mothers who have had difficulty in retaining custody of their kids through legal problems or substance abuse, and it is a guidance system to get them back on their feet, dealing with work training, job training, you know, all the things to live and manage your life. When we went there, there was a class going on where they were teaching them how to balance a checking account, and it's like, you know, just basic life skills, which was so great to have that opportunity here in Burbank. Very excited for them to be here in our city. And then on Saturday, I, as a SAG union member, I went down to the corner of Hollywood Way in Alameda, where there was a demonstration for IATSE members who were encouraging a yes vote on their strike authorization for all of the the trade unionists in the film industry. And lo and behold, they ended up voting for a big strike. So that's, we're gonna be keeping an eye on that here in the city. We have a lot of, a lot of industry folks here. So thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Anthony. Vice Mayor?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a few things, obviously, we we attended the employee breakfast. Thank you very much to the employees. I hope you enjoyed the breakfast and know how much they're appreciated. I also participated in the Mobility 21 Virtual Summit. I attended the police pink car unveiling for Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Just for the residents' information, there's a police car and a motorcycle in front of the police station, police fire facility. Having come out there and taken pictures with them, they're awesome. And I just wanted to remind everybody that tomorrow night, the Dodgers are playing the St. Louis Cardinals, so go Dodgers, and hopefully they win tomorrow night and they get into the World Series, into the playoffs. So thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Monday, yesterday, I had a meeting with Superintendent Matt Hill from our Burbank Unified School District, and Ryan, who's the owner and CEO of West Coast Customs, and I just kind of brokered a meeting with them because we're trying to bring a car restoration fabrication, paint, art, computer type of school to Burbank. And it'll be kind of a first of its own here or anywhere, and it was a really great discussion with the superintendent, and just another way of partnering up and trying to do what's best for our kids in the community. But this would be really neat if we're able to pull this school off, and we'd be the only one in the region right now that would have a high-profile guy from West Coast Customs, curriculum, accredited instructors, work experience, you know, especially through our adult education, to help these folks get a job certified within a year, and also have, you know, mentorship for the high school kids trying to get into it. So I was really glad to foster that that great meeting that we had. And then I I met up with Councilmember Schultz, and we did the ribbon cutting for Chili John's that's been here a very long time at that corner. And, you know, being a Star Watcher, that was a episode of The Rookie that comes on on Sunday nights on Channel Seven. There was a robbery in that area, and Chili John's was there, so it's kind of cool. And then a special get well for Sister Regina. She's a very popular lady in our community, so Sister Regina from the entire St. Phimbar community, we're so happy, everything was successful, and can't wait to see you out and about in the community, but our wishes, our prayers, and we're so happy for you, Sister Regina. And then to the Burbank community at large, you're scaring me, I see a lot of goblins and ghouls starting to show up in people's front lawns, and just want to give everybody a shout out that loves Halloween, and I really appreciate driving up and down the neighborhoods and seeing people decorate their houses for Halloween. It's kind of one of the treats I've always enjoyed living here in Burbank. So great job, residents, in decorating your homes. Okay, now is the time for the introduction of additional items. Do council members have any items they'd like to introduce? Going once, oh, Councilmember Anthony?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to, to City Manager to come back with a consideration of drafting a public letter to the Alliance of Motion Picture and Television Producers, urging them to quickly make a fair deal with the International Alliance of Theatrical Stage Employees with the express intent to prevent a work stoppage or strike.
Okay, he's got it. Anything else, council members? Going once, going twice, hot dog, hot dog, peanuts, peanuts? Nope. All right, go Dodgers. Burbank community, thank you for joining us this evening. We will now adjourn to Tuesday, October 12, 2021, for a joint meeting. The public may view the meeting online or on television, and they'll be able to provide public comment in the following three ways: by leaving an email comment on the city's webpage, burbancca.gov/ecomments, by emailing directly the city council at citycouncil@burbancca.gov, or by calling in directly to the council meeting at 818-238-3335. Good night, everybody.